Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 5th, 2015 Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the revised minutes of July 8th, our Planning Commission meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have five public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is an annexation petition for approximately 4.33 acres located along Veterans Parkway, Lloyd and Edna Davis, and Alex and Betty Bryan are the applicants. Mr. Blomley, good evening.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, and good evening members of the Planning Commission. Our first public hearing tonight is an annexation request located along the east side of Veterans Parkway, just to the north of Franklin Road. You'll recall that in 2014, we approved a new Kroger grocery store to be located right at the northeast corner of Franklin Road and Veterans Parkway. The subject property is just to the north of the proposed Kroger grocery store. It's two separate parcels that have been requested separately. One is located at 4526 Veterans Parkway, and that is the parcel colored in blue on the map in front of us, as well as 4536 Veterans Parkway, which is the parcel colored in orange. And you'll also notice that included in the annexation study is the right-of-way in front of both of these parcels. And you'll notice that the yellow area surrounding these parcels in every direction except to the west is the existing city limits. The parcels directly to the, directly surrounding these properties were annexed into the city limits in 2013, but these were not annexed at that time, and the, both of the property owners have petitioned the city for annexation. Both parcels are contiguous with the existing city limits, as I mentioned. They are both within the city's urban growth boundary, and both property owners have petitioned the city for annexation. Included in your agenda materials is an annexation feasibility study and plan of services, which states that the city will be able to provide a full complement of services to these two parcels upon annexation. Future development on the subject properties will be responsible for extending sewer to those properties upon development. Sewer is not directly available to the subject properties, but it's just about 800 feet to the east along Overall Creek, and any developers of that property will be responsible for extending that sewer. With that being said, it appears that the city will be able to effect this annexation if it is approved, and provide services, as I mentioned. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this annexation, either before or after the public hearing. And Mr. John Harney is here representing the landowners, if you have any questions for him.
Okay. Mr. Harney, do you have anything you'd like to say before we open the public hearing? Okay. Okay, if you've not been to one of our public hearings before, I'll briefly go over the rules, we conduct them by. I'll open the public hearing and invite anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. If you would desire to speak, come to the microphone, state your name, give your address, if you would, for the record, and then make all your comments to the Planning Commission. If you have questions, please let us know, and we'll, the staff will make note of your questions, and we'll try to answer any questions you might have at the conclusion of the public hearing. Keep all your comments and questions to no more than three minutes, if you would, so we can have an opportunity for everybody to come forward to speak. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing on this matter at this time, and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Nobody at all? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, here, move for approval.
All in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Second public hearing tonight is a rezoning application for approximately 1.4 acres located along Veterans Parkway to be zoned as commercial highway simultaneous with annexation, and 9.65 acres to be rezoned from RM16 to commercial highway. Alex and Betty Bryan and Wright Family Partnerships are the applicants. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you Chairman Lamb. Our second public hearing tonight consists of one of the two parcels that was just considered for annexation. If we have the map in front of us, it is the parcel located in the blue color, which is 4526 Veterans Parkway, contains a single-family residence, and if, without a simulta, excuse me, simultaneous zoning request, it would come into the city with an RS15 zoning classification. However, the applicants have requested the property be zoned commercial highway simultaneous with its annexation. In addition, the property that is in the purple color on the map in front of us, which is 9.65 acres in size, and was annexed into the city and zoned RM16 multifamily residential in 2013, they are requesting that that property be rezoned to commercial highway, in addition to the 1.4 acres being considered for commercial highway simultaneous with annexation. As I mentioned, the subject property is located along the east side of Veterans Parkway, just to the north of Franklin Road. The Kroger is being developed just to the south of the subject property. To the north of the subject property is an additional parcel, or an additional two parcels, one of which was annexed in 2013 and is zoned RM16, much like the larger parcel that is a part of this request. And the other parcel is the other, is 4536 Veterans Parkway, which was also just considered for annexation. Further to the north is the Cloister subdivision, which is a single-family residential subdivision that is zoned PRD, Planned Residential District. There are several single-family residential subdivisions located to the east across Overall Creek that are still located in the unincorporated Rutherford County. Directly to the west of the subject property, across Veterans Parkway are large county single-family residential lots that are roughly five acres or so directly across the street, probably five to 10 acres apiece. The applicants have requested commercial highway for both parcels. They believe that the commercial highway zoning is more appropriate for the subject property, and while they do not have any imminent plans for commercial development on the property, they seek to have the property rezoned for potential future commercial development on the property. The general development plan for the Blackman community, which was adopted in 2001, I believe, recommends medium-density residential uses for the subject parcels. However, the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road, just to the south of the subject property, is recommended to be developed as a local commercial node, and the applicants are, in a manner of speaking, looking to extend that local commercial node a little bit further to the north. The Blackman Development Plan, in calling for this to be medium-density residential, recommended PRD zoning classifications with a density of four to eight units per acre. However, the local commercial node that it recommended for the intersection of Franklin Road and Veterans Parkway, it did recommend that area for retail and restaurant-type uses that would serve the surrounding communities. With that being said, the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter, and then formulate a recommendation for the City Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this request, and Mr. Harney is here representing this application as well.
Mr. Harney? Nothing? Okay. In that case, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. We have no comments, we're ready for a motion. Move for approval.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The third public hearing this evening is a rezoning application for approximately two acres located at 4536 Veterans Parkway to be zoned commercial highway simultaneous with annexation. Lloyd and Edna Davis are the applicants. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you Chairman Lamb. Rather than repeat a whole lot of what I just said, because this is the orange parcel at 4536 Veterans Parkway, in very close proximity to the two parcels that we just considered for commercial highway zoning, I'll keep this one brief. The applicants are requesting commercial highway zoning simultaneous with the annexation of this property, which is approximately two acres in size, and much with the, with the last application, to my knowledge, there is no imminent development plan for the property. However, they do wish to market this for potential future commercial development. And with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and Mr. Harney is here as well.
Presumably, Mr. Harney has the same comments he had before, I'll go right on and open the public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak?
Why are we folk here for this last?
In that case, I'll close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Aye.
Motion's made and signed, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item D is the next public hearing, Florence Road Right-of-Way Abandonment Request for approximately .73 acres of Florence Road Right-of-Way. Denny Hastings, Shane Hastings, and Michael Arvid are the applicants. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you Chairman Lamb. Our fourth public hearing tonight is for excess right-of-way along the west side of Florence Road. I know it seems like we've been seeing a lot of right-of-way abandonments on Florence Road lately, and this is yet another one. This property is located, or this excess right-of-way is located directly in front of the Cedar Retreat Track. You'll recall, at our last Planning Commission meeting, our day Planning Commission meeting, there was a preliminary plat and master plan on the agenda for the Cedar Retreat subdivision. Mr. Denny Hastings, the developer. Back in 2006, the zoning for that plan was approved, and then around 2008 and 2009, Florence Road was reconstructed in front of this parcel, and it was shifted further to the east to improve the alignment and remove a sharp curve that was, that was in the roadway there. With that realignment, it left excess right-of-way along the west side. Mr. Hastings has requested that that excess right-of-way be abandoned by the city and then transferred to him. His PRD pattern vote for the Cedar Retreat development shows this area to be part of the subdivision's common area, used as a quote-unquote passive park, and the developer's engineer has submitted an exhibit showing the exact dimensions of the property. After Mr. Hastings made his request, Mr. Hastings contacted the neighboring property owner to the north, Mr. Everett, and there is a much smaller portion of excess right-of-way in front of Mr. Everett's property. You can see it's denoted in the purple color on the map in front of you as additional study area. Mr. Everett did wish to have this area in front of his property abandoned as well, and he joined in with Mr. Hastings on this application. And included in the agenda materials is the right-of-way abandonment study completed by Mr. Ornellis of our staff, and the departments raised no issues that would pose an imminent threat to the abandonment of this, of this right-of-way. If the Planning Commission approves this right-of-way abandonment request, staff recommends the following conditions of approval. Utility and drainage usements as needed must be retained prior to the abandonment of the right-of-way. The applicants must provide a legal description and exhibit and any other documentation necessary for the preparation of the required legal documents. Number three, all legal documents are subject to the approval of the city attorney. And number four, the applicant will be responsible for recording the quitclaim deed. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter, and then formulate a recommendation for the City Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
Is this gonna finish up Florence Road?
I haven't looked over the entire length. If I was a betting man, I'd say probably no.
Mr. Young, there are still two or three remnants from the construction and realignment that remain to be addressed.
Okay. We still have retained adequate right-of-way for improvements to Florence Road in the future, should that be, you know, advantageous?
Our engineering staff has indicated that no additional right-of-way is needed. There are some utility and drainage usements that will be needed, but they concur with the amount of right-of-way that is proposed to be abandoned.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Same people. Nobody wish to speak, I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of this commission?
Move for approval with the conditions of the city staff.
Motion's made and signed, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And the final public hearing, save the best for last here, I guess. The proposed amendment to the sign ordinance regarding temporary signs and signs that are exempt from permitting fees. City of Murfreesboro Legal and Building and Codes Departments are the applicants. Mr. Whitaker. Oh, excuse me, do you want to go first, or would you like Ms. Kerr to go?
Actually, I will let Ms. Kerr go first, and then I'll-
Ms. Kerr, good evenings, good seeing you.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, and thank you, members of the Planning Commission. As a follow-up to several Planning Commission meetings, including initial public hearing, a city bus tour, a special work session meeting which included a presentation by the Murfreesboro Police Department, and two stakeholder meetings, staff tonight is presenting the revised proposed changes to the temporary and exempt provisions of the temporary sign ordinance from the combined input with the Building and Codes Department, the Legal Department, Planning Commission, Fire and Police Department, and stakeholders. The staff proposes restructuring of all temporary sign information into one section of the sign ordinance to simplify and reduce confusion, to better accommodate businesses, citizens, and sign companies to locate and understand regulations of temporary signs more efficiently. To achieve this, staff proposes removing all information about temporary sign regulations within various sections of the overall current sign ordinance, and placing them in a revised temporary sign ordinance section with general regulations and conditionally-allowed temporary signs for a complete temporary sign section with all the pertinent information. We believe that this restructuring will help simplify and add clarity to the temporary sign provisions. Removal and restructural of the sections of the temporary sign ordinance regulations will be from definitions, prohibited, exempt from permit, violations and penalties, and removal of certain signs. Within this restructuring, staff proposes some changes to conditionally allowable temporary signs. We would reduce the maximum size of other temporary signs in commercial highway, commercial local, heavy industrial, and light industrial zones from 64 square feet to 32 square feet. We would also reduce the maximum height of other temporary signs in commercial, industrial, commercial, light heavy, light and heavy industrial, and commercial local zones from 16 foot to 12 foot, and increase the maximum height of other temporary signs in all other zones from 10 foot to 12 foot, and this will make it conforming throughout the city on the size of signs as well as the height of signs. The definitions will be changed. We will define a beacon as a type of a prohibited temporary sign. We'll define equipment machinery, mural, and public art as types of signs that are exempt from permit and fees. Equipment and machinery signs will be allowed to be two square feet of signage per linear foot of a particular side of a said piece of equipment or machinery. Examples of these would be like gas pumps, ice machine, red box, and propane exchange tank dispensaries. Murals which do not pertain to businesses may be on a side or rear building wall, and are not to be on more than two elevations of a building. We will be defining a feather sign as a new type of conditionally-allowed type of sign. It'll be limited to three signs per lot, and each feather flag sign will count as one temporary sign. They will be allowed to be 14 foot in overall height, and they will be required to be 14 foot from the right-of-way, or from the curb, and out of the right-of-way. We will be defining a sandwich board as a new type of conditionally allowable temporary sign, allowed in a commercial zone outside of the Gateway District overlay when visible from a right-of-way, and in CBD district. When on a sidewalk, it must maintain a five-foot clear zone for ADA compliance, and must be removed when severe weather is in the forecast. An only manual changeable copy is allowed on a sandwich board sign. We will define the vehicle sign, which is currently and remains partly allowed and partly prohibited. A vehicle is prohibited, vehicle sign is prohibited when the vehicle is parked on a public right-of-way, public property, or private property, so as to be visible from a public right-of-way where the apparent purpose is to display a message. This does not preclude an owner or a tenant of a lot or a business patron while transactioning a business on a lot from parking a vehicle on that lot. And parked does not include incidental stops of two hours or less. We will, we are proposing to delete the definition of a temporary window sign as no longer required with the new, new definition of a window sign, and revise the definition of convenience, enter-and-exit, pennant signs, and pole signs. Convenience signs will also be increased from two and a half square foot to three square foot, and enter-and-exit signs will be increased from four and a half square foot to five square foot. And we will be adding, proposing to add a new subsection three to definitions of an inflatable, to include an electric-powered air-activated device, which will be considered an inflatable. Those are like the stick man blow-up machines with the air power that blows them up. It's not like a helium balloon or something. This is, there's some confusion with individuals that put those out, they don't understand they're supposed to get a permit for that, and a permit is required for an inflatable. We would propose to delete portable sign as a conditionally allowable type of temporary sign, and it will become a prohibited type of temporary signs. These are the types of signs that are the yellow pull-behind trailer type signs that have manual changeable copy on them. Probably in a year's time, we may have one, you have to get those with a permit and a fee, and they're just not used much in Murfreesboro at this time, so we're just gonna put that as a prohibited type of sign. We're gonna decrease the number of days that temporary signs are held by the city when picked up by an inspector from 30 days to 10 days. We have an overwhelming amount of signs that we accumulate, especially during election time, and we don't have the storage space to keep it for 30 days, so we're asking that that be decreased to 10 days. The revisions would also allow pennants like the ones along Main Street and around the square to be placed on private property in the Gateway District overlay, but only on private utility and light poles. Pennants will not be allowed to be on decorative light poles on Medical Center Parkway and along other streets within the Gateway. The revisions would also require that banners be attached to buildings only. Currently, the ordinance does allow them to be on buildings and canopies, and it has been decided that we're gonna allow these on buildings only, or, right, proposing that they be on buildings only. The revisions will require that all temporary directional signs greater than three square foot include the calendar date of the event. This is only allowable for a temporary sign off-premise, which is advertising for like an open house, an auction, a circus, antique show, or a home buying class that someone might give. Those must be on private property, have property owner's permission. There are four signs allowed per event, and may be installed 10 days prior to the event and removed within two days after the event.
Excuse me, we-
Huh?
Read that four for a big-
No. What did I say?
You said three square feet? Can we read that?
They can be, they have anything greater than four square foot?
Four square.
Right. I apologize if I said three, I thought it was four. Okay. The revisions would also allow non-commercial stationary inflatables for 30 consecutive days in all commercial zones, would be with a sign permit but without a fee. The revisions would also allow non-commercial stationary inflatables in all residential zones without a permit or a fee. The revisions would also allow for string lighting, which is either white or clear at all zones any time, and colored string lighting between the times of the year November 15th to January 15th, and this is exempt from a permit or sign fee. String lighting shall not be attached to another temporary sign at any time. Then we have, last but not least, the window signs. Window signs, in the current code, window signage is 15% of all the area of a window on a building outside the central business district, which is 50%. But the code between the exempted section and the prohibited section are conflicting, difficult to understand and enforce. So after several continued internal discussions, public meetings, Planning Commission meetings, presentation by the Murfreesboro Police Department Public Relations Crime Prevention Officer Amy Norvell, and a second stakeholders meeting, the proposed to regulate window signs for public safety and aesthetics are window signs. In all non-residential zones and non-residential use areas of a PUD or MU zone that are not within a Gateway District overlay zone, be that the ground floor, basement level floor has a clear zone to be maintained on each window and door with a window, which is three foot from the floor surface, and that is up to a line of six foot above the floor surface. Unlimited window sound, signs would be allowed outside the clear vision zone. For all non-residential zones and non-residential use areas of a PUD, a mixed-use MU zone that are within the Gateway District overlay, on the ground or basement floor levels, a clear zone must be maintained on each window and door with a window. Window signs outside the clear vision zone shall not cover more than 25% of the total surface of any window, of the window or the window of a door. For the purpose of subsection two, each windows separated by a mullion shall be considered separately. The mullions are the divider lines between each individual pane on, on windows. All other floors above the ground level floor window sign shall not cover more than 15% of the windows above a ground level floor. In all zones, the use of window frame lighting, whether it be by continuous light, strip light, or by string lighting, illuminating the perimeter of one or more individual window panes or a group of window panes is prohibited. At this time, Mr. Gary Whitaker has an exhibit to review on window signs, what we currently allow, and what is proposed for commercial highway, heavy industrial, light industrial, and commercial fringe, and what would be allowed in the Gateway mixed-use areas and PUDs.
Thank you.
Everybody, we have a need, and to move, get along with the-
Are you gonna, Margaret Ann's gonna put it up on the-
She's got it up.
On the screen as well?
Yeah. If cable could put up the-
There we go. Chairman, what we have attempted to do is give you an illustration to kinda show you what is current and proposed on the window signs only. We're not covering in this illustration everything Amelia was talking about, but I'd like to kinda explain this. If you look at the illustration, and you were handed a copy of this earlier, from left to right, all of those storefronts are identical in size. They're 19 feet wide, 10 foot tall, and they're divided up in the same configuration. What we've done is, the one to the far left is actually depleting the current 15% that is adopted today. You can see that, and basically all I did to simplify this is show you 15% of that window area, that is top window, including the doors and the side lights that you see. So that's, that illustrates 15% of glass coverage that would be allowed today, in any configuration. Just as long as you don't exceed the 15%, that's except the CBD area, which is 50% if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Okay. The middle one would deplete what we're proposing today with a clear zone. If you'll look to the, to the, to the far right, you'll see the dimension three foot up, and then another three foot for the clear zone, the six-foot tall area. That clear zone leaves you a balance area of 133 square feet. Now, each one of these storefronts depicts 190 square feet. You get 28.5 currently today. The balance, and this is just one illustration, I know, but the balance today, if you were to go with what we proposed, the clear zone area would comprise 57 square feet. The balance to cover with window signs would be 133 square feet. Now, that is outside the GDO. If you look at the, the next illustration, it says proposed ordinance for the GDO, MU, and PUD area. We do hold our Gateway to a higher standard- We do hold our Gateway to a higher standard. We've always done that since, since we started the Gateway. Staff has proposed 25% of the balance. In the one in the middle, you can see we said that you get the total balance, the one to the right, the GDO area, you'd get 25%. Now, I would like to explain something. After going through this exercise today to prepare this for you, the way that currently reads, or the proposed for the GDO, we're proposing 25% of the balance area left outside a clear zone, but it's each individual glass pane you'd have to figure. After going through this today, I would hope you would consider just making it 25% of the balance left. Taking each individual pane is quite difficult in trying to calculate each one of those. It would make sense, and like I said, after going through this exercise today, it came apparent that we should just say 25% of the balance left. But I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have on this illustration at this time.
Any questions for the, from the planning commission for Ms. Kerr or Mr. Whitaker?
Chairman, I do believe Amelia has one more section that she does want to talk to you about before we actually leave the proposed changes, but I just wanted to make sure you had clarity on the illustration.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. One unrelated item to temporary and exempt signs that needs to be resolved is that over the past few years, there have been some ground signs that have become non-conforming due to subdividing of lots. If there's a sign on a lot and they subdivide it, the, the, the sign may have a tenant on it that's on the part that was separated off of that lot. So we have a lot of non-conform, not a lot, a few non-conforming signs out there that we are proposing that, that for these ground signs made non-conforming by the re-subdivision of property shall be considered a legally non-conforming sign, provided that the subdivision causing such sign to be non-conforming occurred prior to the passing of the amendment on the first reading. Okay?
Okay.
And we also have a couple of guests here from the Police and Fire Department, and we'd like for them to give a brief presentation. The first one is going to be Ms. Amy Norvell. She is, of course, the police officer that spoke at the special meeting that we have, and she is a Public Relations Crime Prevention Officer.
Good evening. Just to get everybody on the same level playing field, I plan to just read the memo that I prepared for the work session that I presented to some of you so that everybody knows what I had to say, and there's, it's all out there. Natural surveillance issues. A large part of crime prevention is natural surveillance of an area. Surveillance can be broken into three areas: natural, organized, and mechanical. The easiest and lowest cost and probably the most effective is natural surveillance. It's the design and placement of physical features such as, in such a way as to maximize visibility both into and out of a building. This includes items such as windows and lighting. The idea behind this is the see and be seen theory, which refers to people's actions and behavior being more socially acceptable and law-abiding when they know the probability is greater for their actions to be seen. This is easily achieved with large windows, such as those seen in the front of some businesses. These windows allow the public to feel welcomed into the business and feel safe knowing what activity is going on inside prior to entering. They also allow the employees and patrons to know what lies outside the door upon their exit. This natural surveillance becomes even more important to businesses such as convenience stores, which are open late at night and susceptible to robberies. Clear visibility inside this type of business can prevent some crimes and create a safer situation for all involved. Covering of windows is a safety issue for police officers answering emergency calls to the business and surrounding areas. The lack of visibility into an open business can put the officer at a greater risk. This risk is further increased when the officer is answering this type of call in the dark due to limited visibility. These signs are not part of the building, temporary signs, and are mobile, allowing a suspect to peek around the signs and give them an advantage over the responding officer. Window wraps afford visibility out of the business but not always into the business. This creates a greater advantage for the criminal in case of robberies and a disadvantage to unsuspecting customers who may walk in during the commission of a crime. Several areas in the country have adopted the rules of the 20% coverage. And lastly, another aspect affecting natural surveillance is landscaping. Shrubbery should be maintained to three feet or below, and tree canopies should be trimmed to five feet or higher. I believe that's where you've come with your clear visibility stripe in the window coverings. The three to five feet or three to six feet, if you're in a vehicle, it's not just police officers that see into these businesses, but the public drives by. We get calls every day from the public calling to report suspicious activity, or they drive by a store that's open and they don't see a clerk and they don't see movement, and they want our officers to go check on that clerk and make sure that they're okay. Could be something beyond a crime. It could be a medical situation. The clerk could have had a medical crisis, and someone being able to see in from outside can call for help for him. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, officer. Appreciate it.
And we also have Mr. Carl Pease from the Murfreesboro Fire Department to speak briefly.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Carl Pease, Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue. When we were approached about the clear zone requirement, we were asked if we had any necessary concerns about it. One of the areas that we focus on when we were thinking about a clear zone is especially like a convenience store. In, in the code, the code requires that all convenience stores that sell gasoline have an emergency shut-off valve. The shut-off valve is behind the counter of the convenience stores. In the event somebody leaves a nozzle in the car, which has happened several times, and drives off, the convenience store clerk can hit the emergency shut-off that kills all the pumps. There's also been situations where a vehicle, the pumps are designed that if a car hits a pump, there is a safety mechanism built into the bottom of the pump that's supposed to shut the valves off to the fuel. However, if the pipe breaks lower than the safety mechanism, it cannot shut the pump off. So the store clerk then has the ability, hit the emergency bypass, and that kills all the pumps. That's one of the concerns we have. As far as the clear zone, as far as seeing in from our standpoint, not only from a fire standpoint, but from a medical standpoint, when we respond to a medical call, sometimes we don't know exactly what the call entails. Most of the time, officers are being dispatched with us. Depends on where the officer's at. Sometimes we beat the officers there, sometimes the officers beat us there. But that clear visibility, we will be able to see what we're getting into. We've been called to medical calls where it's actually been a domestic situation or where weapons are involved. If we know that in advance, then we stage till the officers can clear the scene. If we don't know that, then we can approach and actually become part of another situation if we don't have any way to protect ourselves. With this clear zone, we can see into the business. We can see into the, the area that we're needing to get to. From a fire standpoint, one thing that will help us is we'll be able to see what's going on inside. Sometimes we have to make a decision on how we approach a fire, on what the fire tells us or what we can see. If we can see into this window and we can see what the fire's doing, instead of doing what's called a vertical ventilation, we may be able to do a horizontal ventilation. So being able to see into the situation will help us from that standpoint. And again, the biggest area though that I can think of would be like the convenience stores with the, the gas pumps. There are emergency shut-offs outside that the public can hit if they know they even exist. We know the store clerks know they're there. They're right beside them, they're at the cash registers. If something goes on at the pump and they can see that, they can hit the emergency bypass that shuts all the pumps down. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Have you had any calls that the convenience store operator had to shut the valves off?
Yes, sir, we have.
How often does that occur? Six a year?
I'd say once or twice a year. And most of the time, it was from the vehicle leaving the nozzle in the car, pulling away. Again, these pumps are designed to shut themselves off, but if they don't, the person at the counter can hit them off. Typically, you'll hear the big racket when the thing jerks it out of the pump, that's when the clerk can hit the button, and it kills all the pumps, not just the one there that kills them all.
Anything else?
The Fire and Rescue Department takes great pride in being the first on the scene.
They try to.
I, I know it tickles you all to death when you're the first one there. You beat the ambulances by a long time, and then you beat the police by a couple of minutes. If it is not a medical call, you're at the mercy if you don't know what.
Yes, sir.
Especially if you can't see in.
Yes.
So, and you're not equipped with vests, or weapons, or training to handle that.
Yes, sir.
If you can't see in, it puts you in harm's way.
Yes, sir, it could.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pease.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm available as well as Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Ives, to answer any questions you all may have, and then open it up for a public hearing.
Appreciate Chief Crispin being here tonight. Chief, you don't have anything you'd like to add? Oh, I... We got here for... We're honored to have you, Chief.
Don't know that I have anything to add. Mr. Chairman, Commission members, thank you for the diligence study that's been put into this issue. Very proud of Officer Norvell and Fire Marshal Pease for the work that they've done. One of the things that Officer Norvell has done as a part of preparation for her duties, as I think you know, is attended crime prevention for environmental design training that's geared toward providing this kind of information for residents' businesses to help them avoid becoming crime victims by, by some thoughtful information about how to better protect their businesses and so forth and so on. I think this is a great piece of change to our existing ordinance, and I hope you'll give it your full attention. I know that you will. Certainly, we need all the help we can get. We need all the tools that we can leverage to keep our officers safe, to safeguard our business owners and, and their patrons. So we very much appreciate your consideration of this and be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the Chief? Just thank you so much for the great job the Police Department and the Fire and Rescue Department do for our city.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. Ms. Kerr, anything else?
Yes.
Does anybody on the Planning Commission have any comments or questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. If not, I'll open the public hearing this time. Anybody that'd like to come forward, please come to the microphone, state your name, give your address, and make your comments.
Tina Scheidel, 839 North Thompson Lane. I'm in the GDO. And thanks, guys, for being there, but I've had, you know, my store broken into also. The windows played no part in catching that person. And I, you know, I can't believe really that we're having to defend our windows, simply because not everybody has a window. I mean, what if you don't have a window and you have brick? You can't see through brick. You can't see through tent. You can't see through curtains. You know, are we saying that we're going to have to have curtains at the top and the bottom of the windows? I mean, I guess I'm just not prepared to understand that. Also, our military here, the Marines, the Air Force, the federal government, just require them to have vision on their windows for protection. You're asking us to take our stuff off for protection. We're so confused. According to the Middle Tennessee Electric, medical, Middle Tennessee Electric, 70% of the city's income is from small businesses. And, you know, you take our business away with some of this advertising space, I mean, you're asking yourselves to live on 30% of your check. And we just need the opportunity to do businesses well, and you're taking away prime area for us to do business. You know, I, I just don't get it. Let's see. So what is the Police Department going to do if they can't see in? Are they going to go on in anyway? Or is the window just, you know, are we just using it as our excuse? And I think that 15% of my window would be about this size. So I don't think that's fair either because I have smaller windows. I think these pictures here of these people that have windows like this, that might be a good idea, but I don't have windows like that. So I need to know what you've put in place to supply us with advertising opportunity that you've given them.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
I'm totally new to this. Hope I don't get too nervous and stutter. Okay. So I got, I kind of agree with some of the stuff she's talking about. This is a good example of a business with a huge window. But if... Oh, I'm sorry. Sean Fletcher, 1610 Gray Bar Lane. Thank you. Okay. So this is a good example of what you can do with a large set of windows, and some people have those, especially newer businesses. But older businesses, they have small windows, some have windows way up here, some have windows that only show down here. There are so many different things that could happen with windows of having a square foot, you know, I know you can have so many square foot tops, so many square foot bottoms, but a lot of logos span over several panes, and they use up several things, even if you're doing a strip with some words in it. I think there needs to be better clarification on maybe a minimum square footage, because if you have a small window like she's talking about, she still deserves to have a pretty good-sized logo so people can see it. So I think maybe some more clarification on the height issues, you know, because three to six foot don't apply to every window. Like I say, some windows are higher, some are lower. That's mainly my things. I, I don't think we can, door logos on entrance to doors, I don't know how big we're allowed to have those now. A lot of customers use about 24-inch-wide logos on these 30-inch glass panes, and most of those logos fall in that three to six foot area. Are we going to be allowed to do that anymore? Store hours typically go in that same spot, so maybe more clarification on that. But we need to have more examples of what other owners are going to do for window sizing.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Amanda Cox, 919 Northwest Broad Street. First off, I would like to give a big thank you to our men and women of public safety. I am married to a paramedic, so I have a small vision of, you know, insight into the struggles that they go into. That being said, I would love to see some definitive proof that this proposal has or definitely would create a benefit for public safety in exchange for the things that it's taking away from businesses. There is not really much debate that a thriving business community is good for the community at large. What's good for business is good for our city. This is especially true considering that it seems like Murfreesboro gets about 30% of its revenue from the local sales tax. There is proof that signs are good both for businesses and good for the consumers and therefore good for the economy as a whole. The University of San Diego did a study that found that if each business was allowed to increase their signage by one, one sign, that would generate almost a 5% uptick in sales. This was a greater increase in sales than you saw if they moved into a larger business, and a greater increase in sales than they saw if they stayed open and extended hours. And of course, that increase in sales drove the revenue back into the sales tax base and back into the community. Another study found out that about 75% of consumers have either stopped at a store or referred a friend to a store to, due to an exciting sign or a sign that made that business stand out. You know, the first step in having customers shop with you is helping them find you and getting them in the door. Most customers also indicated that a lack of signage would deter them from entering a business. Yet another study, this one by the University of Cincinnati, found that 49.7% of the respondents, so almost 50 people, had driven past a business at which they wanted to stop and shop because they could not find it, because they... found that forty-nine point seven percent of the respondents, so almost fifty people, had driven past a business at which they wanted to stop and shop because they could not find it, because there was inappropriate signage. Of course, this costs the business money, and we've established that that costs the community money, but it also costs the consumer. They have to pay for that lack of visibility in the time that it takes them to either find a replacement for that store that they intended to shop at, or to backtrack in traffic to their place that was the original destination. And of course, we know from driving around Murfreesboro probably what a hazard traffic can be, particularly with people who don't know exactly which direction they're heading. I have absolutely no doubt that this proposal, as it's written, would create a hardship for my business, and obviously, many of the local businesses in the area. We would like to do what is best for our businesses, and best for our community. And I would ask that the signed proposal be considered again, and perhaps some of these restrictions on window signage relaxed, to help all of us equally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Anybody else?
My name is Malcolm Staller. My address is 107 West Lidle Street. I am a founder of a nonprofit for veterans, and I'm located here in the square of Murfreesboro, which I love. It's a central location for all of our 21,000 veterans that we're representing. The situation I'm dealing with at the moment, due to the state, I'm sorry, due to the city, is signage because of, our signs are grandfathered in, meaning I cannot hang a sign. Window space within what the clear zone does not allow me to represent my business or my nonprofit, to allow veterans to feel comfortable, because there is no signage allowed. With this being up top or down at the bottom, there will be cars blocking, and people look for the six to, I'm sorry, three to foot, three-foot to six-foot area. Whenever bypassing, and also with the court being built right in front of my building as well, would be a perfect opportunity for people to be walking across the street, seeing at eye level as well. Now, the police officers made a great point. My current, I'm sorry about that. My current occupation before this nonprofit was military. I was military police. So, entering buildings and also homes are very dangerous. Having bulletproof vests are definitely needed, and firefighters and EMTs are much needed for their protection, and having the police involved. But due to the clear signing, you never know what you're going to enter into, regardless of the building, because these storefronts are visible. The majority of our businesses on the square are brick and mortar, with only one door or a tiny window, which has offices in where the criminals can hide as well. So, with this, I propose that we really evaluate, and really set up scenarios, into where we can evaluate what exactly is going on with the storefront and the clarity, because what you all are proposing is that we spend a lot of our money for our local businesses, and are also our advertising dollars, to change these small little details in order to please you all versus actually bringing in revenue for our city. So, that is my proposal.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service. Anybody else?
Hi. Jennifer Durand, 624 North Walnut Street. Also represent the president of the Downtown Business Association, which is about eighty-five businesses, a couple of which are here today. I really appreciate the thoughtful comments on the folks that have come before me. This just came to my attention two days ago, and trying to read it and digest it, and then listen to what Ms. Kerr presented differs from the pages that I had. So, apparently, there's a lot of work and changes, ever-evolving. My concern or question is, based on what I've heard from the thoughtful folks just before me, is that representing the other eighty-five businesses that are in the Downtown Business District, I know how important small business is, and how this impact would affect them. If I'm just finding out about this two days ago and wrapping my head around it, I know that they would have some other input into this as well. So, I just ask you to consider that, and the considerations that the folks have asked that you take a different look at this, or come up with some alternatives, because I do support what they just said. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello there. I'm Leigh Willard, 501 Northwest Broad Street, Dodges Chicken. If you look at your board with the windows, that's a perfect example of what we have on our store. So, we've got all the nice windows, and we have all the nice stickers and everything on the windows. But we also have plenty of clear zone in our windows. We've got the stickers, but yet we still have enough visual aspect of the windows that you are able to see inside and outside the store throughout the day and night. One of the questions that we wanted to ask was, we have displays on the inside of the windows. Some of these displays reach between four and four-and-a-half feet high. They hold stuff, candy bars, chips. You know, I don't know if any of y'all have been there or not. So, some of this is going to be in that clear zone. Will we, will we, excuse me, will we be required to remove these displays? If the displays are there, and they're covering up those portions of the windows, are we able to put the stickers or window signage on the outside, covering up where those displays are? Because, you know, that area is already covered anyways. Another question that we wanted to make sure that we were asking was, I think y'all mentioned the signage with the lights on them. Like, we have a couple that say "check cashing," and they go across like the top of our windows. We want to make sure if those are still available to have in there. They made a comment about stopping the gas pumps. I am, I don't know if anyone else here is from one of the gas stations. That should not be something that y'all should have to worry about. We, our stop is on the outside of our store. It's clearly labeled "all pump stops." That should be something that should be required of every gas station, in my opinion. If that is an issue, if that is inside the store, signage on the door is not going to help firemen or anyone else go in and push that sign. That needs to be something that is out and available for everybody, excuse me, everybody. The pumps, whenever somebody puts their nozzle in the car, and they get in their car, and they drive off down the road and forget to put the nozzle back up, it yanks it away. There should be a requirement on there to have the quick links on the hoses so that they, they release, so that they don't spill out gas on the ground. That's another thing. The signage on the windows is not going to help. That's other, completely other issues. So, that's just a couple of things that I wanted to bring up, and to see if we could get some of that clarified.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Will. Anybody else?
Hi. How are y'all this evening? I'm Evelyn Kivonemi.
I'm sorry.
Hi. How are you?
Good. Can you state your name again, please? I couldn't hear it.
Evelyn Kivonemi, 919 Northwest Broad Street. I'm sure that there are other businesses in the area who haven't aged like ours. This will be our 2050 year. And during that time period, we have seen lots and lots of regulatory changes in Murfreesboro. One of the things with the current signage is you have businesses like ours that have invested in different graphics on the window, based on past sign laws. We were told that the inside of our windows were ours to do with as we pleased, as long as we didn't, you know, put something offensive or ugly. So, businesses like mine, you know, we did beautiful graphics. We did, you know, animals and pictures and things like that out of tint. Those were meant to last. In fact, they have a twenty-five-year warranty on them, so they're something that was meant to last based on the regulations that we have, or that have been here. So, you know, we're wondering what's going to go on with those, if those are things that we're going to be allowed to keep. And then, I also wanted to come up and say that being against the clear vision zone does not mean that we do not love our police officers, and that we don't love our firefighters and our first responders. As you heard, you know, Amanda say, we have first responders in the family. And so, we definitely understand the challenges that they face. But at the same time, we also understand that giving up our liberty, you know, or, in this case, our use of our windows, you know, is going to be a hardship. And it's not an either-or. We, just like the lady who spoke before me, we have plenty of gaps in our windows so that you can clearly see in, customers can clearly see out. In fact, we're open primarily during the day. You can see through our graphics, because they're made of tents. So, you can clearly see out of the building, and you can see around it. The other thing that I wanted to point out based on this is there's been, you know, we're being told that there's, that right now we have fifteen percent of our windows that we can cover. I'm not exactly sure where that came from. We sent the regulations to one of our business organizations, and I will tell you honestly, they were astounded that there were seventy-nine pages of regulations. They said seventy-nine pages was almost incredible for them to be able to read over. And when I asked them what coverage, what regulations were currently covering us, they told me that either none, that we could have any signage we wanted, or we could have no signs at all. Basically, that there are parts of the code that counteract, that right now, the fifteen percent, apparently, according to it, looks as if it applies to the Central Business District only. And then, the following, number twenty-six, which basically says that you can't have any signage up against the window, either negate signs for everyone, or would be interpreted to read that it only applies to the Central Business District. So, we kind of feel in our area like we're going from being told at one point that we could have anything we want on the inside, to suddenly coming in and saying, "Well, you know, we're going to take control of your business from three feet, three feet of your floor space in front of your windows." So, we would ask that in order to be able to continue to do business, you know, we have twelve, twelve people besides my husband and myself who depend on the income that our business makes. And if we were to have to take the money that we use with those graphics to attract customers into the store, and spend that on advertising, that may be one less employee that we can afford to have. So, please, please consider that everything that you take away from a business, and the harder that you make it on a business to be able to function, the fewer businesses that we will have here, and the less revenue that they're going to generate. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
My name is Teri Schneider, and my home address is 540 Sidney Place. I want to first, Gary, thank you for acknowledging the fact that having, calculating each window separately is an enormous task. The other thing I want to say is doors. I don't think that the current clear zone that you have on doors is reasonable. That's pretty much eye level, where everybody wants to look at your business name, hours of operation, that kind of thing. I think that should be reevaluated. As she said, our current code is seventy-nine pages. And as somebody in the industry, it's very difficult to tell people what they can and can't have. I do think we need to get more clear and concise. Just for an example, Brentwood has twenty-two pages, and Franklin has far less than that. I just want you to kind of think about how many businesses this is going to impact, and how many businesses are going to have some kind of financial hardship or financial cost to themselves on taking down what they currently have, and getting new ones. Certainly, I don't think that you guys want to have ninety-five percent of businesses that have to comply with this, to take down stuff, and then reinvest in more graphics that they may have just purchased, or, like she did, she bought something that was supposed to last twenty-five years. I also have a graphic that I would be more than happy to share with you. And this is just an overall percentage. I have some for everybody, if you would like to see it. But it shows you what twenty-five percent of this set of windows would cover, twenty percent, fifteen percent, and then also what you guys are proposing above and below that line. Aesthetically, I'm just going to be honest, this looks horrible compared to something like this. And my family comes from law enforcement. I've had my dad, who's served forty-one years. He's looked at this. He says, "I'd have no problem walking into that business." None. So, I just really want you to reevaluate, and maybe just consider giving us an overall percentage. That way, we don't have to calculate each area. We can give people what they want. We can, you know, accommodate businesses. We don't have to force them to take stuff down that they've already paid for. I would love to be able to provide this to you guys, so if you can see it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Kerr, do you have any comments to any of the questions that may have been levied?
Well, just a couple of things. The, as I said in the presentation, the window sign section of our ordinance within the prohibited and the exempted sections is quite confusing. It does, it does state that you will have fifteen percent of your windows outside of the, outside of the CBD district. Or it's prohibited to have more than fifteen percent of the signs on the outside of the window. On the inside of the windows, if you don't mind, I'm just going to briefly go tell you exactly how it's stated within the exhibited section that refers you to the prohibited section. And this is one reason that it has made it difficult in order to be able to present this to business owners, and explain it, and to enforce it.
Okay. Are you quoting the current?
The current ordinance, as it is. Just so that we are all on the same page about how the signs are measured right now at fifteen percent. In the exempted section, it says, "Signs painted on the outside glass surface of a window or doors and indicates a name, address, and hours of lawful business conducted herein, provided such windows do not cover more than fifteen percent of the total window area to which it is applied." And it says, "Also see Code 25 and 1/4, 24A, 25 and 26." So, when you go to prohibited, 25 and 1/4, 24, 25 and 26, 25 says, "Permanent window signs applied to the interior of a window of the Central Business District, which are larger than fifteen percent of the area of a particular window, subsection 26 herein. The temporary signs shall, signs applied to the interior of the window of the Central Business District, which are larger than fifty percent, and the area of a particular window, subject to section 20A, 26 herein." Now, that is basically saying, it is prohibited to have any more, any more than fifteen percent on the inside of your windows, except in the Central Business District. Okay? And then, you have signs in contact with or within three feet of the inside of a window, which are visible from the outside, and do not meet the requirements of this chapter. So, even though it's convoluted, confusing, it is stated that it is fifteen percent of the windows, whether it's on the inside or the outside of the windows. That's one reason we want to clarify this, and clean it up, and make it easier for people to understand. As far as the curtains, no, Ms. Scheidel referenced curtains on the windows. This, what we are doing is primarily with signage. It has nothing to do with windows or blinds, only windows, or anything that is suspended behind windows, or in front of windows. I know with all the different types of window types, and the way that people put signs in windows, it is very difficult to come up with an ordinance to be able to write that to where we can make it work for every individual company, business's specifications. We can't accommodate all circumstances. So, we're trying to come up with an option that is, has safety, health, safety, welfare for the citizens of Murfreesboro, as well as also help be able to promote businesses as well. And there was one that asked about, "The displays on the inside of the windows will not be regulated. Signs cannot be placed on the windows to hide the display area, but you would be able to put signs on the racks, inside of the, on the rack, on the inside of the business. We would not regulate with inside the business." With this proposal, we are proposing to give the businesses a year to be able to recoup any loss from any window signage that they would have to take off of their windows. This would not go into effect for the window signage for at least a year. And I believe that's all I have. Any questions?
Okay.
Amelia, does that apply to the entire ordinance, or just the window treatment?
Just the window portion of it.
Okay. So, the other would go into effect six months, following?
It would go in following the third final reading, fifteen days following.
Fifteen days following?
Following the third final reading, with counsel.
That's standard for most ordinances, become effective fifteen days after passage of third and final.
Following the third final reading with counsel.
That would, that's standard for most ordinances to become effective fifteen days after passage on third and final. Some ordinances require a thirty-day waiting period. But the longer waiting period, we are proposing to have just for the window sign provision, to give people more time to, at least to, to that extent amortize out the expense, and also for everybody to become, to try to become aware. We would have a notification program to let people know what's coming, and so they could plan accordingly. But the rest of the ordinance, the rest of the changes would go into effect fifteen days after passage.
Any other questions?
Chairman?
Yes?
I also heard that, and it was a good statistic, someone had talked about how increasing one sign increases the business. I just wanted to point out that the planning commission and city council in the last four and a half years have approved five changes, sign changes, that increased either the total number of signs, the allowable signage, number of flag signs, how we measure signs, as far as was laxed and increased. So, in the last four and a half years, this body, as well as the city council, have approved five changes which increase signage, not decrease. So, I just wanted to point that out for the record.
Mr. Ives, the state and federal governments, are they subject to our sign ordinance?
Well, on property that they own, no. On property that they might rent or lease, it is sometimes questionable. But certainly, for instance, the university campus, on-campus signs are not subject to our sign ordinance and to many of our other ordinances unless they, they agree to abide by it. And the same would be true for the federal government.
Mr. Young?
Bear with me. Our ordinance today allows fifteen percent.
Yes.
I would dare say that eighty percent of the people in Murfreesboro are not compliant with that sign ordinance today.
I would say seventy days.
Fifty percent?
Seventy days.
Seventy, okay, so I'm not too far off. So, that tells us that we need to do something with our sign ordinance.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm not even thinking about being a lawyer, but I sure didn't understand all that, and I'm not sure Mr. Ives did either. So, there's another reason that we need to work on our sign ordinance. We need to get the verbiage and the linkage corrected. And I know this is what this body is trying to do, and it'll be passed on to the council. So, so we want to try to get people in compliance. So, the debate seems to be whether you put in a percentage of, of a window, which could, in effect, take out the clear zone. And I heard someone say about parking cars, "Well, I have a business, and I have six signs across the front. The cars block, people see in and out. So, signs really are not going to help me one way or the other." But the, what I think we have to do, we have got to be able to let our first responders, our fire and police, EMTs, be able to see in. Now, there may be several ways to do this. One is a clear zone. Now, the, and that pretty well solves the problem. But possibly, the problem with the clear zone is it takes the very best real estate and takes it out of the, takes it out of the game. Now, that's a, that's a negative on the clear zone. The positives on the clear zone are the customers can see in, the emergency people can see in. Now, in my business, I want my windows as clear as possible because I want my customers to see in and see what I have. Everybody doesn't think like me, and I don't think like anybody else. So, that's, you know, that's not either good or bad. But we've studied this a long time, and it's a tough choice. I don't know if we need to, if we're, if we're, if we're just allowed fifteen percent now, anything we do is going to be better. Anything we do is going to be better. If we enforced what we had at fifteen percent, it'd be a war. And I'm a small businessman, too, but we've got to, in the back of our minds, we've got to protect the small business. But we've also got to protect our customers, our clients, and our, I'm going to lump them into emergency services. So, I don't know if there's a real clear answer. I think the, the staff has come up with a pretty good idea how to do this. I hear what you're saying about the clear zone. Mr. Whitaker, I, I don't know if there's a better way to do this or not.
I can honestly say that staff has spent between the legal department and the building code staff, inspectors, and feedback from public meetings, we have put hundreds of hours in this one section, bus rides, that we all took everybody on, I think, which was really beneficial to get to see window signs and how, how they are applied and how they are used. And we've heard from our first responders, we have tried to cover it from A to Z. We, we do care about businesses, like I just previously said. We've increased, the last five sign proposals were increases. This is an increase over what's on the book today. Part of, and a, part of what we are trying to do is to clear up some of the confusion, make it user-friendly, and we have ways to go. We will be back, after we adjust the temporary signs, we will be back to the planning commission and the city council in the future for the attached signs to clear that up, and hopefully even increase if we can. In no way are we trying to take business away or their ability, but I think we have to consider all elements of window signs. It is sign regulation. We regulate all signs, attached, ground signs, monument signs, temporary signs.
All communities do.
And this is a part of that puzzle, but I can guarantee this, planning commission, that we have put hundreds of hours into this section. I think Mr. Ives would agree with me on that. I can tell you, from looking in other areas, other cities, there's no perfect ordinance, there's no way we can draft one that will address every situation. We, we can't achieve that. We're going to have to come up with the best proposal that we, that we can, and, and hope that works. And keep in mind that our sign ordinance is a living document. It is not something that has never been changed. If you've been on this planning commission or city council or have lived in this city, you know that this document has changed over the last twenty-eight years and will continue to change.
Well, you pointed out that, that in the last three years, that we have made five different changes to the sign ordinance, and all of them were increasing the size of signs. I'm just looking at this middle illustration of the clear zone. Now, my math's not real good, but if you round up two-hundred square feet for the total area, and your clear zone is fifty-seven feet, that gives you a available signage percentage of in the high sixties. So, we've gone from fifteen percent to sixty-something percent?
Fifteen percent, if your numbers are correct. And what I've got down here is a, the total glass area is a hundred and ninety square feet. Fifty-seven percent would be utilized for a clear zone. That leaves you a hundred and thirty-three square feet of available glass area to put signs where you want to. Now, that's outside the GDO now. But yes, it is, in my opinion, a substantial increase. And naturally, it is going to be proportionate, the more glass area you have, the more it's going to be, the less, the more restrictive it's going to be. But there's nothing that we can do about, and we have no intentions to regulate how much glass you have to put in your building when you construct it. That is not, that is not at all on the table.
I've been involved with the sign ordinance for some twenty-eight years now, and it's been one of the most divisive, confusing, and untasteful things that I think I've had to do on city government. I try diligently to stay away from having to do anything with it, but unfortunately, we have to face it. It's a, like you said, a living document, and it's, it's gone through many changes over the years, and it'll continue to go through changes, the technology changes and, and everything. It's, it's really a shame we have to have a, a sign ordinance. If everybody had what we would feel would be good taste to put up signs, that, that the public would feel be in good taste, that would adequately advertise businesses and services, you know, it'd be all great. But what's fair to you is not fair to somebody else, and what is in good taste to you may not be in good taste to somebody else. So, we have to have sign ordinances. I can't speak in what is in Franklin or Brentwood's sign ordinance, and I really don't care, but I, I know one thing, the length of our ordinance might have something to do with the staff of the city of Murfreesboro tries to work with business leaders and tries to be fair about what they put in there. A lot of the stuff that the sign ordinance covers goes over things that the staff has put in there to try to accommodate business owners. This commission is certainly not anti-business. All of us up here are either current business owners or former business owners, and, and we all know the importance of proper signage in your business. But we have to have some type of rules and regulations to go by, just like all communities and all societies have to have laws and rules to go by, and this is unfortunately has to be one of them. Now, you know, we, we also have the sign industry here. In my business, I deal with a lot of sign companies, and, you know, we, we have a lot of good sign companies in Murfreesboro. We're blessed, and a lot of good people in it, and I appreciate your concerns about all this. And I thank you for participating in this public forum tonight. But this commission has to decide what we feel is best for the city of Murfreesboro, and then that will go on to the city council, where they will either ratify it, or they'll change it to what they feel is best. So, you know, we've got to go one way or the other on it. So, what are the wishes of this commission?
Just one, one more comment.
Yes, Ms. Jones.
I did, we just want to say, and I think we've pretty much made clear that I think we, we feel like as a planning commission, that, you know, where we heard several times tonight from many different people that we're taking something away from them, we, we do not feel like we're taking anything away. If we currently have fifteen percent on the books, or as part of our ordinance, and we are unable to enforce that, we're trying to come up with something that we can enforce, and something greater than fifteen percent is going to be easier to enforce than what we have right now. So, I, I do not feel like we're taking anything away. We could leave it as it is and then just go out and enforce fifteen percent. That, I guess, is an option. Come up with some way to try to enforce that. The other thing I did want to just question, when we're talking about the windows and the clear zone that we have, did we make any, is there anything in there about the doors where the store name and hours can be displayed? I mean, I think we got so caught up in then trying to do the, the clear zone and just make that be our, the way we were going to come up with the amount that we could have in the windows, that I, I think, did we go back and get something for the doors? I mean?
As it's currently drafted, there would not be allowed any signage in the clear zone of a door. At one time, in, in one of our iterations, we did have a provision in there for a, and I, my recollection is one and a half square feet.
That's correct.
That would be allowed on the glass portion of a door. At that time, I don't think we were specifying a clear zone. We just said up to one and a half square feet on a, on a glass door. Because we're not supposed to talk about content, we didn't limit that to hours and days or anything of that nature, but expecting that that's what most people would use it for. That, I'm not sure if it was fully intentional or not, as many times as we've been over this, but I, it, it has been dropped out as currently drafted.
But that's one place, I mean, I can think of a lot of businesses, there's nothing else on the windows, except on the glass door is the name of the business and the hours of operation, and nothing else on huge plate glass windows in front of some of our businesses.
Right, and a, a business that only, that has no windows but a glass door would have something of that nature. Usually, there's a credit card company that has sponsored it, and it'll have one of their names on it, and along with the other information. I, I, Gary, I don't, I guess, I think it might be reasonable to add that back in.
Well, maybe we need to.
I think it would be reasonable to do that.
I also agree, Mr. Ives. I think we should put back in, I know I have two doors. I have two sets of two doors. And my office hours are attached to the building and not the doors.
Right.
But a lot of people aren't that way, but, so I can see a small area on a glass door that gives the hours of operation, because people can drive up and see it, and then come back later, come in or do what. I think that's reasonable, and that's what we want to make this whole ordinance, we want to make it reasonable. And I, I would like to add that back in. I think it was what, a foot and a half by foot and a half?
Didn't we have a one and a half square foot?
There was one and a half square foot, and then?
That'll hold all the office hours.
A foot, twelve feet.
Okay, we have, we have an example.
You want it happened either this way or?
Put it the other way.
Oh. Sorry.
And here again, if you've got a clear zone on each side of that window, whoever needs to go in, whether it be the public or the emergency people, they can look on either side of that.
A, a sign of that size, if it's solid or not, will still allow a significant amount of vision around it.
But that sign would easily fit within this section of three foot down on this example given here on this board. In fact, we're giving you more space than that. We're giving you from the ground, three foot up. So, basically, rather than a foot and a half, you'd be allowed three foot up, and whatever the width of that door is, you could completely cover that.
Outside the GDO, you could, yes, but I think the, the point would be that having these store hours close to the ground or up in the sky is not as good as having it, like usually right near the, the, the handle where you're, where you're pushing on it and having it right there. And, and I certainly see your point, and I know.
The comments that have been made, though, about, you know, the, the thickness of the ordinance, it's, it's difficult for me to see going in and start tinkering with it to add little changes to it, which are going to increase the thickness of the book. If we say one page, no signs and windows, it's going to be a very thin book, it'd be a very thin ordinance. But definitely, we need to have businesses with the ability to advertise. If you believe in this clear zone, which I do personally, I think it will increase the safety. If we keep everything out of that, it's as simple as saying, you can take a broomstick that's six foot long, mark it at three foot, and anything from the three-foot mark up to the six-foot mark is, stay out of that zone. It's that simple. And, and that's the simplicity of it, that, you know, if you want to get the ordinance down to just a few pages, then that's the direction we need to go, rather than to continually tweak and say, "Okay, you get a certain percentage here, or you get a certain amount of square footage here, or you get a," you know, and every example leads on to an if-but. And, and I think it just continually convolutes the whole intention of what we're trying to accomplish if we continually do that. And so.
I, I understand completely.
But, but the other side of it is, is we're listening to input from the citizens and the stakeholders, and some of their points are very, very valid, and that we should consider those in tweaking this ordinance. And we've done that. We have, as you know, as you say, Mr. Whitaker, we've worked on this thing for two years. We've taken bus rides, two and a half hour bus rides around and looked at all different segments of the city. I think we're real, real close. But I do feel that we need to have the ability to put office hours or business hours on a door.
I think a, I don't want to drag this thing out, you know, any longer either, but I think a deferral might be in order here to allow the staff to go back and kind of digest the comments that the sign industry representatives have made tonight.
digest the comments that the sign industry representatives have made tonight, and plus what we're talking about on the hours of operation, the foot and a half deal, and then come back to us at the next meeting if you're ready for it. And if you have any other changes you want to make to it. If not, if there's anything matter, then we can go ahead and make our decision then.
I will say, you know, to say that we haven't listened would be a far cry from the truth, because at the last stakeholders' meeting, when this ordinance was presented, the proposed ordinance was to keep a clear zone and maintain a twenty-five percent, no, we're going to fifteen percent.
Stay at fifteen, on the rest of it.
And had considered twenty-five percent, which was allowing the same amount of advertising in the future that was allowed today for those who weren't in violation. What we're doing now is we're saying, in this case, we're in the high sixties of percentage on your window to encourage people to advertise and make your business successful. But, with the intentions of for or against the clear zone, it's simply a matter of, down the road from my perspective, if I had the opportunity to protect one of our police officers, and I didn't take advantage of that opportunity, not for aesthetic reasons but for safety reasons, I would be in error. And that's the reason that I feel that we've studied this ordinance to death, we've worked on it as diligently as possible, we have communicated in every way we possibly can through radio, we've communicated through the media, we've, I've been trying to let everybody know on Facebook and absolutely been shot as the messenger. But, the intent was to make people aware of what was going on so that they could contact people and let them know their concerns with where we're at and what we're doing. And this document has been changed as recently as yesterday, I think, based on comments that had been made in the past from the business community, from the public, as well as employees of stores who have said, "I would like to see if someone's coming across the parking lot with something that might endanger my life, I want to be able to run out the back door." And...
Ms. Kerr.
Go ahead.
I have a question. The clear zone is truly as is stated, clear zone. Nothing goes in this area. Is that correct?
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're out of order. No, ma'am. I'm sorry.
The clear zone.
The clear zone is strictly clear zone.
It is clear.
Three to six foot. It is a clear zone, and this is for the sign ordinance. We're regulating signage through the sign ordinance. We're not regulating anything on the inside.
And we're not regulating curtains or Venetian blinds, but signs that are attached or immediately adjacent to the window. I don't think we can, if we wanted to, I don't think we can address Venetian blinds or curtains in this ordinance. If there's a desire to do that, it needs to be in a different vehicle than the sign ordinance.
Any other questions or comments about the planning commission? Not, what are the wishes of this commission?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we defer and tweak it just a little bit with the things that we've discussed tonight and bring it back at a future meeting in the next...
I would expect that we can, we'll have this to you at our next meeting, the middle of the month.
Okay.
So, you agree, Gary?
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
Motion is made to defer. Is there a second? Motion is made, and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, let's make sure we've got that, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, one no. The motion carries, item will be deferred. That completes our public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on to staff comments and other business. Thank you very much, Ms. Kerr, for all your hard work on this. Mr. Lewis, I think you have a brief presentation for us.
It'd be very brief, Chairman Lamb. I had before you a, some schedule of training sessions for the teleconferences we have coming up for the rest of the year, and the number of hours that all the board members and staff members have. Y'all take a look at it, and we have five more months left in the year, so we need to get our hours. So, if you have any questions, you can contact me or the staff upstairs, and we'll take care of it.
Anybody has any questions about it, I need to see you after the meeting, all right?
Or tomorrow.
Anything else, sir?
Mr. Lewis, are all those meetings at 12 o'clock, high noon?
They're at noon, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have actually failed to introduce Mr. Donald Anthony, who's our, I think he's still with us. If I can get him to stand up over there. And he is our principal planner. He joined us. Mr. Anthony, when did you join us?
Absolutely. Twenty-two minutes, two.
And I have failed in my duties to introduce him, but I did want to do it during the day meeting. I wanted to have him front and center of the night meeting, so...
You have our sympathies, sir.
I think that's for working with me.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Any other business, Mr. Whitaker?
That's it.
I have one, Chairman Lamb.
Yes, sir, Mr. Blom.
Just wanted to let the planning commission know and let the public know that we have a neighborhood meeting scheduled on Monday, which is August 10th. Mr. Lewis, I believe that's at 6:00 P.M., 6:00 P.M. at Irma Segal Middle, or excuse me, Irma Segal Elementary School for the Valleybrook rezoning on Compton Road. We have received a revised PRD request for that, and so we will be holding a neighborhood meeting as required in the planning commission's motion back in May. So, just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Give us a date time one more time.
It will be this coming Monday, August the 10th, at 6:00 P.M. at Irma Segal Elementary School. In a room yet to be determined, I believe.
If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.